Don't be nervous. So, welcome to tonight's public hearing on the town's proposed zoning law. Again, apologies for the technical difficulties. Tonight's public hearing provides the public with the opportunity to address their comments to the town board on the town's proposed first zoning law. Before I provide some context for tonight's hearing, I want to clarify the process and ground rules. The board will consider your comments at a later date and will not be answering questions this evening. You've already passed the door, but please sign in at the door to be recognized to speak. If you are attending remotely, please raise your Zoom hand to speak. We will alternate between in-person and Zoom speakers in the order of the sign-in sheet or the hand raising. Each speaker will have one opportunity to address the board. I think we're okay at this point, but the capacity of this building is, the Old Town Hall is 75. If we reach that limit, the Slaterville Fire Hall has kindly made the fire hall available for overflow. And the meeting is being zoomed there, so it's being projected and zoomed. You may wait there to speak in person here when space allows, or you may comment from Zoom at the fire hall. Beth Harrington is over there watching over things. So each speaker has three minutes to speak. The timekeeper is Mike Brown. He's on the meeting. He will give notice if you're still speaking after two and a half minutes, that you have 30 seconds to conclude. Please be respectful of this ground rule so that all speakers have a chance to speak. We request that members of the public respect the process by not interrupting or speaking out of turn. Written comments may be submitted instead or in addition to spoken comments. And we're accepting written comments through this Friday at five, end of business day at 5:00 PM. And speakers here at the town hall should come to the podium to address the town board. And where there's another microphone. Now, for a brief background and overview of where we are. This land use regulation is proposed to support the goals of the town's vision as expressed in the comprehensive plan. Caroline adopted its first comprehensive plan in 2006, which was updated in 2021 after years of work by the town's planning board, which necessarily involved extensive public outreach. Recognizing the widespread love for the rural nature of Caroline and the potential for unplanned growth not supportive of the town's goals, without more intentional land use regulations, the comprehensive plan identified a number of land use tools which were considered in more depth by the town's Task Force for Land Use and Economic Development, which met in public meetings throughout the fall of 2020. With the findings of the comprehensive plan and at the recommendation of the task force, the town board felt a responsibility to immediately consider zoning regulations that would guide future development in ways that support the town's vision. As required by New York State town law in early 2021, we appointed a zoning commission to draft a proposed zoning law for Caroline. And I want to acknowledge the members of the zoning commission. Jean McFeeters was chair, Bill Padocca, Barbara News, Bruce Murray, Michelle Brown, and Ernie Bales. Over a two-year period, meeting approximately every other week in 51 public meetings that encouraged and accepted public input, holding six public information sessions as well as two public hearings, the zoning commission proposed the zoning law for the town of Caroline on March 27th of 23. As anyone who followed will attest, decisions were made by the zoning commission with rigorous discussion and consideration of relevant information. The zoning commission was guided and assisted by the town's experienced planning consultants, Nan Stolzenberg and Rick Letterer Barnes, who was the mapping expert. I want to point out that a real strength of Nan's is her roots and professional experience in rural New York land use planning, especially ag and farmland planning, in addition to her very steady hand. The town board accepted the report from the zoning commission on April 5th of 23 and has been reviewing and revising it since then. Tonight's public hearing is to garner public feedback on the proposed zoning law that the board has now put forward. The proposed zoning law establishes four types of districts, ag rural, hamlets, of which there are eight, focused commercial, and extreme corridor overlay district. The zoning law establishes allowed uses in each of these districts. The districts were defined by current patterns of development with the goal of protecting and promoting the quality of life in each of the parts of the town and the town overall. Highlights of the proposed zoning law include housing of all types of foreign units or less is permitted in all districts, subject to New York State Building Code, just as it is now. Larger multifamily dwellings are permitted with site plan review, also as they are now. The law provides incentives for senior and affordable housing units. Agricultural operations and structures are permitted in all districts. Major subdivisions and commercial developments are required to establish buffers with adjacent agricultural operations. The proposed zoning law has two measures to promote preservation of open space. In the ag rural district, the zoning law establishes a three-acre average for future subdivisions. This is a modest subdivision limit that promotes the preservation of open space and gives current landowners the right to establish how their land is subdivided. The second measure is the conservation subdivision provision for major subdivisions in the ag rural district that is designed to develop parcels in ways that conserve open land and protect the environment. Both of these measures are protective of agriculture in the town. The stream corridor overlay district establishes riparian buffers along Caroline streams to protect our waterways and fresh waters, as well as property owners and their assets. The town board is proposing 75-foot buffers for Six Mile Creek in the hamlets and 100-foot buffers for Six Mile Creek in the ag rural and focused commercial districts. For other perennial streams, the proposed buffer is 50 feet from the top of the stream bank. For intermittent streams, we're proposing a 25-foot buffer. In summary, the zoning law is protective in the military. It promotes smart growth principles of nodal development of livable neighborhoods and hamlet centers and preservation of open space for agriculture and recreation. Thanks again for everybody coming tonight. I will now open the public hearing. Comments are invited for the town board's consideration. So I will now call on the first speaker. So do you have a sheet there, Becky? Great, thank you. Thank you. Okay, our first speaker is Matt Mix. And if you go to the podium there and great.
More comments for you guys. I can't read in three minutes. So we all know my opinion about the zoning. If you're going to put it in, you're going to put it in, and there's nothing we can do about it. But you ought to do it correctly, and I still think it's got a large number of flaws and questions that aren't answered. And I hope you seriously consider relooking at it time and time again before you adopt it. And as I've said before, I will be glad to sit and answer some of the questions that I've asked and see if we can come together with some things. There's 22,000 acres that's about to lose development rights in this town on your three-acre average. Because you can develop one, the other two set. That's written into my things that I've left for you. New York State will offer, if you apply and are granted the program, to buy your development rights. They pay 1,500, 2,000, 2,500, depending on what you got and where. At 22,000 acres, that's $44 million worth of development rights that could be lost in this town. Numbers are there. Anyways, all I can say is, is when I attend board meetings, I've had some comments. If a question's asked, you ought to have an answer. When I asked about water and other things, I commented, well, you just can't. Doesn't work for me. I'm self-employed, businessman. I had to know numbers when I did things. Make sure you have your numbers. Make sure that your comments are pointing to the thing. And when I hear comments that are a little sarcastic, be advised. I've been very polite and patient, but I can swear down a trucker. Careful how you say things. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you. Now we'll go to Zoom land. Jesse, does anyone have their hand up?
First is Hannah Wiley.
Okay, thank you, Hannah. Go ahead.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. I mean, as you guys know, I don't want zoning. It's, I mean, it's scary. I'm not, I'm just not looking forward to it. I feel like you guys have thrown so much of our tax money at this thing. It doesn't matter how many people don't want it. It's going to be pushed through anyway. I'm, I really hope you guys consider how many people don't want this thing.
Thank you, Hannah. Are you finished with your comments?
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm going to eat dinner now. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Next up, we have Connie O'Brien.
First, I'd like to thank all involved to work so tirelessly on this zoning proposal. They made every effort to hear everyone's voices and took their concerns into consideration. Truly believe that. It's clear that not all Caroline residents are in favor of the proposed zoning law. And having lived here for 43 years, I've been saddened by the divisiveness that I've witnessed. However, the voice of the people has been heard through the democratic process, and I am in favor of putting this into action. Of particular importance to me is that one aspect of this proposal addresses protecting our vital natural resources, especially water. You've likely heard some of the horror stories of communities who thought things are fine the way they are. We've never needed zoning before. What could happen? And didn't have the foresight to protect this precious resource. Towns in Pennsylvania where toxic fracking chemicals leached into groundwater, making it undrinkable and the town uninhabitable. Small towns in the southwest who thought that the huge aquifer they had beneath them could never be exhausted until the California almond farmers moved into their unregulated areas and began pumping out millions of gallons of water. More than a few towns, people realized too late that this resource should have been regulated and protected. To paraphrase an old saying, they're not making any more land or fresh water. Thank you again for helping to protect what we and hopefully, hopefully, future generations have. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Back to Zoom land. Jesse?
Yep, Will Lawrence.
Okay, great.
Hi.
Hi, Will.
Hi. So I actually do share a lot of the environmental concerns that underlie some of the decisions that were made. I do feel though that people tend to overgeneralize. And I think that Caroline isn't everywhere. It's a very specific rural town. And to the point, you know, all the smart growth and livability concepts were really developed geared toward urban and suburban environments. You know, in the context of the age-friendly emphasis that a lot of planning has taken. Of course, I personally am going to likely lose money directly because of the refusal to make my property commercial or make it a commercial zone. And it's been a commercial location since 1968 continuously. So, you know, there's three commercial buildings now. There'll be forever non-conforming, which will hamper any changes that someone will want to make. And people think, oh, well, your grandfather in. But a lot of people have no idea what that really means. It doesn't mean I get to have a commercial use of the property forever. It doesn't mean that at all. So I found, yes, you know, people voted you guys in, and they all had their reasons. But I wouldn't assume that they actually knew what was in the zoning. When I brought it up with people.
30 seconds.
Saying my situation, they were like, oh, I didn't know. And I think that that's pretty telling. But every month of delay that may be caused in the future by zoning, the zoning process is an 8% loss for me. One month equals 8% loss. Thanks.
Thank you, Will. Peter Hoyt.
Well, you all know where I stand on zoning law. I feel through that again, I would much rather that you don't have it. I will acknowledge two things before I make my pitch for the night. One is that either by design or by happenstance, you all did in fact wait till after the election, which is what we had asked for originally. And I will also acknowledge that you all won the election. And I accept those results. We live as a democracy. But the election was a lot closer though than past elections have been. Closer than any election I can remember, at least recently. The closest town board was won by one of the incumbents. 48.5 to 51.5. I mean, that's a three-point spread. That represents about 40 votes out of a total of 1,400 cast. In the case of the supervisor, it was a little wider spread, seven points. 46.5 to 53.5 represents a little under 100 votes. Still a relatively small number, relatively close. And I guess the point that I just want to make is it's something that is this important to the town and essentially irrevocable. Not legally irrevocable. A future town board could go through the process that we're going through now and cancel zoning. But it's a practical matter. It's, that isn't going to happen. This is something the town is going to whip on into the indefinite future. And it seems to me it's something this important should have much more of the public behind it. You know, two-thirds, three-quarters, an overwhelming plea for a change. And that is not the case here. This is being put through by essentially a simple majority, perfectly legal. You guys.
30 seconds.
Thank you. You guys went through the process. And it's probably too late to plead for any kind of a halting or suspension or tabling or any, any other delaying tactic. But once again, I will just ask you, please, to consider that this is not something that the overwhelming majority of the town of Caroline wants. Thanks.
Thank you, Peter. Please. Jesse, next up in Zoom land.
Is Jean McFeeters.
Great. Go ahead, Jean.
Good evening, and thank you for holding this public hearing. I wanted to say that one of the things that we discussed at length on the zoning commission was that we felt that the zoning law should be revisited probably in the first year and then at least every other year because by the people who will sit on the board's zoning appeals or whatever you're going to call it, and that input should be taken from, from people in the town. Because whenever a new law is put in, there are always a few unintended consequences. And, and we really need, I think the town needs to see how it goes. So I am very glad that you, the board spoke that they wanted to do that, and I am very glad that that will happen. I also want to say that we worked on this law for well over two years on the commission. You had asked us to come back with, to you with a proposal, which I think we did a tremendous amount of work on. And I want to thank everybody in the town who came forth and spoke their opinions. And I think we tried to take many of them into, into action. Things were changed that we, from the very first, and people saw that. So there was a first draft, there was a second draft, there was a third draft. They were different. And, and they, and I think that we responded to what people were saying. So again, my thanks, and I look forward to seeing how it goes. And I do think that the majority of people in the town went out and voted and that the majority of those people spoke by that vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. All right, we'll return to in-person with Janet Nash.
I have a question, and I know that you won't answer anything tonight, but I do have a question for all of the town board members. Are you planning on the town of Caroline being your forever home? Have you asked yourselves when making decisions and voting in these new laws? What if you're wrong? Will you be here to enjoy the benefits of your decisions or here to suffer the consequences?
Thank you, Janet. Jesse? Yeah, go ahead.
Is Catherine and Gia.
Hi, everybody. Hi, it's Catherine. Hey, so we're here. We're here at the public hearing. I've already submitted written comments to the board, and I hope that they will be given serious consideration. But tonight, I would like to make four primary points publicly. First, a reminder that when Nolan Gray visited, he stated that the closest thing to a public referendum on zoning would be to wait until after November's election to vote on the zoning law. A petition signed by over 1,200 people echoed the sentiment asking not to vote on zoning until after the election. And as many speakers already tonight have shared, the board did wait. They were each reelected despite significant efforts to unseat them, which is a town of Caroline referendum on zoning by Nolan Gray's own definition. This doesn't mean that the zoning law in front of us is beyond critique. And like I said, I have submitted several pages of specific comments on the details. But fundamentally, I hope we can acknowledge that there is support for zoning in the town, and I hope we can move forward more cohesively as a community than has been the standard behavior with zoning so far. Second, I want to talk about laundromats. The elimination of a laundromat is one of the more perplexing things in this law. In terms of community benefit and amenities to make Caroline more livable for people, I would say a place to do laundry is pretty high on the list. It is certainly of more value than a car wash. I have submitted more specifics on this in writing in terms of water use and whatnot, but I want to state publicly that I think this is a real miss in the zoning law, and I would recommend that it be reconsidered prior to the law's adoption. Number three, development guidelines and subjective language generally. I truly fail to understand why nothing has been learned from the experience of the review board and limitations of the design guidelines within our 2018 subdivision and site plan review laws. Arguably, the complete lack of any enforceable or meaningful contribution of these guidelines is one of the primary drivers of this zoning situation to begin with because we didn't know how to handle the application for a project which was seen by many as inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, yet no objective standards were in place to stop it. I have said this many times before, but I'll say it again and for the last time after hearing, I guess, which is that emotion and subjectivity weaken the law and ought to be removed. Finally, after many close reads of this zoning law and all of the drafts which have preceded it and all of the hours and years I have spent on this prior to my resignation, I have come to believe that the three hamlets, which are identified in the comprehensive plan as quote currently viable and which meet this zoning law's own definition of a hamlet, are the only ones which should remain on the use table. And these are Slaterville, Speedsville, and Brooktondale. The next most reasonable addition would be Beesimer, but at a far smaller scale than is currently mapped. The rest are quote historical housing clusters according to the comprehensive plan. They have minimal or no services, and one does not even have a speed limit drop indicating entry into a particular place of any kind. The Caroline Hamlet is a stretch of State Route 79 with no operating community services on it whatsoever. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine. Back to in-person, Ellen Harrison.
Thank you, Tony Lee. I'd like to echo a little bit of the things that were given to, first, so many townspeople have been involved in this. There was a land use and economic development committee on which I served, and that was the one that recommended that we move forward to establish the zoning commission. It was a zoning commission that met for years, and now the town board has continued. And in all of those, it's been a remarkable openness to public input, even when it was kind of scary, and it was beyond what was required legally. So I applaud that. I served on this review board, and when I was on the review board, realized that we had to have zoning because I was put in a position of having to vote yes because there was no way to vote no for a proposal that clearly was not consistent with the comprehensive plan. And my law says I was supposed to look at consistency with the comprehensive plan. So it was a, it was an untenable situation. So I believe zoning is absolutely necessary. I think that the zoning ordinance as proposed here is essentially fair and reasonable, and it's addressed many of the concerns that were raised by people who are essentially opposed to zoning entirely. But some issues were raised rather than just hell no. And I think many of those issues were addressed with revisions that went forward. And in fact, from my perspective, I think some of those accommodations went too far. I don't think it's as strong an ordinance as I would like to see in terms of some of the environmental protection. I would like to see five acres, not three acres, in the agricultural average zoning area, area required. But that was reduced to three. I also, more specifically, view the proposed more dense commercial zone is proposed across from the Caroline school I've commented before. Said, I think that's a bad location. We have a school there. Speed limit is reduced. People come and pick up their kids. School buses come and go. It's right at Thomas Road where there is a lot of cross-traffic. I assume there's going to be a traffic light there after some time because there are people on bikes and pedestrians, et cetera. So it also seems to me that the commercial zone makes sense to be built at Route 79 because that's in fact where a lot of the population will be coming from. So all that said, I think it's time to pass this ordinance. And I applaud the idea that we would go for some revisions, but I think it's time to pass zoning. Thanks.
Thank you, Ellen. Zoom land, Jesse?
Barbara News.
Okay.
Thank you. I wanted to start off by thanking the board for all of the effort that has gone into this process over quite a number of years now with the town. with the task force that has been mentioned, the comprehensive planning process that has been mentioned, the zoning commission. And now, since you've been working for quite some time now on the draft that was given you by the zoning commission, and I think you've done a very thoughtful job of further listening to the community beyond all the listening and revising that had been done in years previous that resulted in the draft law. You've done a great job, I think, in taking your time and not feeling rushed, as many people have have mentioned. You had the good judgment to work methodically and thoughtfully to work through the election, not knowing what the results of the election were going to be, but not feeling pressured by that. I think you've done a great job in revising the approach on the water resource overlay to be a stream corridor overlay. I think that's been that been done thoughtfully and informed by science. So I wanted to speak in favor of moving forward now with the next steps towards adopting the zoning ordinance for the town of Caroline. And thank you for your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay. Back to in person, Bruce Murray.
I don't have a lot to say, but I'm going to issue you some questions later on, but I wasn't against zoning. I was for more of a condensed version, something very simple. Talked to the town lawyer before this all started. His exact words to me were start as small as possible, because it can be added to and changed all the way out through, which would be much simpler to do than write something like this and try to change it. But since I'm on the review board, I suggest that you go through some of these kind of arbitrary ambiguous phrases in here and put them down as definitions, so that when it comes time to review some of this stuff, it's not going to turn into, you know, what kind of a match between whoever's handing it to the review board and the review board. Like ecological function. There's a thousand different things in here. You did do rural character, community resilience, desirable community adverse impacts. This should be all in the end with the definitions. Existing character, traditional character, general welfare, you know, certain things. Design coordination, thoughtful design, hamlet character, hamlet site. This is all, how do you think it is? What do you think it is? And we could come to all different kinds of ridiculous arguments about it. I believe it could be much smaller than it is. I mean, I know there's a ton of work put in here. I helped put a lot of the work in. But when it gets down to the end, it's also going to cost the town a lot more money when in the end you're saying that our we got to do something. The zoning officer. You're going to have to have a zoning officer, and I don't believe you're going to be able to hand off all the zoning officers' work to the building inspector, because it's going to be ridiculous amount of work. So it's going to cost a lot more money to do that. I mean, and there's a ton of things in here that you could I just wish and hope once you get all the news, comments and stuff, that you will take the time to go over it one more time.
Thirty seconds.
Finally passed, because that would be greatly appreciated by everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessie.
Next is Laser.
Hello, this is actually Bob Remnick on Level Green in Blackman Hill and Road. And I've been following this all along, is very educational. No secret to some people that that I've been supporting zoning. The things that I want to point out as quickly and simply as possible is is the things about democracy and these discussions about the majority of the people in Caroline. And I always want to point out to people how complex that concept can really get when you want to get to the heart of it. It's not a simple numbers game. There's a whole lot of some people care a lot, and some people care a little, and some people don't care at all, and some people have a vested interest, and some people have been all over the thing. And I I do have quite a bit of, even though, like I say, I'm totally thinking we need this zoning. It seems that it is the 21st century issue that the population is going up, and businesses are coming in, and and all kinds of interests are bumping into each other. Democracy is one of the big things about democracy is the competition of rights, that my rights for this and my priorities for what my rights ought to be can easily bump into the limits of other people's rights, essentially to be protected from my rights. And so, you know, we're getting some of our rights addressed by having zoning, that that our rights for protection of our neighborhood start to come in. The fact that we're stepping on the toes of some of our neighbors in the process of getting some of our protection is undeniable and really needs a lot of respect. I, you know, so I feel like this is, like a lot of these things, this is a it boils down to a two-sided issue, the way our system works, that it's either this or it's that. You can't have this grayness very much. But you end up with a couple of things. Definition, subjectivity. Was that thirty seconds?
Yep.
Okay, definitions and subjectivity, very important that we recognize that if you're going to define things and make them more objective, the size of the document is going to get bigger. You can't have a small document and also have ambiguities going. And the last thing is this concept that we can revisit this. I sure hope that this zoning side, getting it zoning, allows this whole thing to be amended over time as necessary and reviewed openly, and that's that. Thank you very much. Thank you so much for the effort.
Thank you, Bob. Next up is at the town hall, Kim Wetzel.
Evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come to the meeting and talk about zoning. As many people are cognizant of, I am not in favor of zoning. And the reasons for that are, is I have been a businessperson in this community, operated four businesses. I'm somehow retired and a significant landowner, probably one of the most significant landowners that's not involved in agriculture as far as sacred shows. And part of that land puts into my retirement, and as a result of that, if I wanted to sell some building lots, and I have gone to certain places and and made installed septic systems and that sort of thing as a part of my retirement. Now suddenly where I can sell a lot that looks like this, and it was perfectly fine, it's got to be some great big thing. So it's had a negative impact on me. The board, I think, is going to have to really step up to the plate and either hire somebody to interpret and explain, because as I approach board members for trying to understand the way some of these things are going to impact me, it's, well, hey, they kind of don't know. I think it could be like this. Really, it's very difficult. And in particular, I approached the supervisor, and there's been a lot of ambiguity in his answers.
I just will point out, I showed up for the meeting and you did not show up. So and I was happy to explain.
That's possible. I don't know, but I probably had a lot of irons in the fire and, and, you know. But the meetings that I have had with you have had not, the explanations that I've gotten or interpretations of zoning has not been that helpful.
Okay, I'm sorry. Ask again.
So anyway, we can move on beyond that as far as I'm concerned. I think that the town should certainly hire somebody to interpret this stuff, because I have a lot of properties. I have streams running through my properties and places. I have a lot of land that's now commercial. Is it going to still be commercial? That's yet to be seen. I'm having a hard time understanding how much my property on Route 79 is commercial. How much isn't? You know, I own property in other towns within Tompkins County. I own property in surrounding counties, and I don't run into they'll they'll give me a clean-cut interpretation. So I would encourage the town board to hire somebody to interpret for we the people on what we can do with our properties and what we can't do. Thank you for the opportunity to address you.
Thank you, Kim. All right, Jessie.
There are no more hands raised.
Okay. I will go back to the town hall and Christopher Turner.
Hello, everybody. You might not recognize me, because you should know. My name is Chris Turner. I just recently moved in right across the street. I'm looking forward to opening up a food truck business I was originally established in Grand Colorado, and I have Bill Paduka. Are you in here?
He's not here.
He's not here. I had talked to him about some of the zoning laws that were implemented or want to be implemented, one of the reasons why we chose this area. My partner got a job at Cornell, like everybody else that moves here. And it became an incredibly lucrative space to occupy because there were any zoning laws. I have no horse in the race, as I said to so many people. No zoning just means I have to keys to the health department, which is fine, and happy to do that, fire department. Slaterville Fire Department, hi, you guys know me, you're my neighbor. But I'm happy to comply regardless of whatever anything is around here to make sure that I'm a positive aspect to the entire addition to the community here. Obviously, passions are high here, and I've noticed that. I do think that Bill has been incredibly helpful with guiding me through some of that process of being able to be here. And I break over that. However, there is way too much language in the zoning that I've noticed from what I've seen in actively being in three cities before this. And Caroline's a small, small spot. I don't think that it really needs to be that. It's reading through all the articles and everything. It's like reading through, I think the Constitution is smaller. It is. But I'm looking forward to servicing this community here, and obviously, everybody here seems to want the same thing and just to exist and be happy and profitable, and I hope to do so as well. Yeah, I appreciate you guys having the time here and pulling the meeting, and Juicy Chan, if you look it up, there's a plug if you want to know. Barbecue and Jamaican, Polynesian food, mixed up, everything, so it'll be right across the street.
Sounds good.
Assuming you have
Thank you, Chris.
Well, just that name again? Juicy Chan.
Are you open after this meeting?
My truck was getting inspected for the whole thing right now. I'm taking to the line and wrenching everything came on while I was driving to get inspected this morning.
Maybe you should have different spots around.
No, I would go, yeah, we have part of Community Association, too. That's our concert. I have this, he's a solid reception. I can't wait to rock it. I'm going to, he can offer to do a little free all that. Sorry. We'll do, at least it's unhappiness with the high attention.
Thank you, Chris.
I think you'll do well. I think so, too.
Jessie, is there any, have any hands gone up in Zoom land?
No, there isn't.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Pam Shafto.
Hi, thank you for having the meeting. Just something real brief to say. I just would like to thank everybody who's been involved in this whole process for the months and years, really years of work that you've put in on our behalf of all the, on the behalf of all the residents of Caroline. The purpose of zoning rules is to bring some order to development. And Caroline is and will continue to develop in the years ahead. And so zoning is our way of planning ahead. So thank you.
Thank you, Pam. I'll ask one more time. Jessie, any Zoom hands up?
Yep, Irene Wiser.
Okay. Thank you. Irene?
Thanks. Hi, hi, everyone, and I I certainly want to thank everybody who's worked on every version of everything that led up to and including the law that we're considering today. It's, it's been an enormous undertaking. And and I feel really proud of the effort that everybody has put in to be open to to feedback, to reconsidering ideas. To to continue even in this meeting. The demeanor of really everybody. I I I'm just really proud of of living here, and you know, somebody spoke about democracy. I feel like this is democracy in action, and it's, it's hard, it's messy, it's sometimes painful. But I, but I just feel like there couldn't have been a more earnest effort to to find workarounds and common ground and ways to move this forward in a way that that could do the least damage or impact to people and and still protect the town. I like the comments that were just made by Ms. Shafto. I remember a conversation with Pete Hoyt. It was a quick conversation, which doesn't happen very often with Pete, but he saw me on the way in, and he said that 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 he just didn't, didn't see that there was a need for zoning, that he thought that it was a solution in search of a problem. And I said, yeah, I I hear you. I think it's a solution developed to prevent problems. And and I really appreciate that that some people do have an understanding of that. I also really appreciate, as as Jean McFeeters spoke, that that we recognize that this is inevitably imperfect, and that there will be opportunities to review it and consider, you know, perhaps it is too ambiguous. So I just, I'm, I'm just so appreciative of the thoughtful way that everybody has been approaching this, and and I wish you luck as as it moves forward.
Thank you, Irene. Great. I think I think we have no more speakers. I do want to make so a comment that Irene just alluded to it and several others, and our planner Nan mentioned this in her work with the zoning commission, that a zoning law should be examined and revisited on a regular basis. So that is definitely something that is is part of of this whole thing. It's not something that's written in concrete and can never be changed. So it is, in that sense, a living, a living document. It's a living expression of the goals of the community. So so I agree with that. I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks, everybody, for the comments tonight. We've received the verbal comments tonight. We've received written comments. And we will be hashing those over over. hashing those over over and deliberating and making a decision as a board about changes we might want to make before taking the next next step. So with that, I will close tonight's public hearing. And I also want to note that we have, this is an irregular month for a couple of reasons. We are not having a town board meeting next Wednesday, which we normally would on the third Wednesday of the month. We're meeting on the fourth Wednesday this month. The 28th of February will be our next board meeting. And so, as I said, the board will be discussing the comments received, and we'll make a decision about what we may want to put on the agenda for that meeting for the next step for the for this effort. So again, I do want to express my sincere appreciation to everybody for coming out tonight and sharing your thoughts. It's been really, really great. So thank you.
And what is the next step for the board?
Well, the the board has to discuss what we've heard. We need to deliberate on what we've heard and receive written comments as well. So. Bruce Murray?
Do you accept written comments till the end?
Oh, thank you. So yeah, written comments, we are still accepting written comments through 5:00 PM this Friday, two days from now. So if somebody has follow-up comments and they want to, you know, that's great.
What time is the meeting on, 28?
7:00, 7:00 PM, not AM, 7:00 PM. Thank you, everyone. Yeah, thanks so much, everybody. Have a good evening.